Okay, we'll go ahead and start the meeting. This is the City of San Diego, a Commission on Police Practices, a special meeting of November the 29th of 2002. And this meeting is being called because we had to cancel our regular open meeting last week because of extenuating circumstances. But we had some action items that required a tin required action before our next meeting. And so we're having a special meeting. We have four items on the agenda. And those will be the only four items which we will be able to discuss tonight. And so with that, Charmaine, do you want to go and call the roll?
Acting Chaircase.
Here.
Commissioned as that.
Here.
Second Vice Chair Harrington.
Here.
Permission of Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Clark.
Here.
And Commissioner Shay is excused. Permission upon.
Present.
Permission to Dabo Griffin.
I'm here.
Permission of Spruce is also excused as well as Commissioner Pink. We have some internal affairs. Captain Dupree.
I am here.
Also Executive Assistant Chief McGrath. And Lieutenant Smutlock and Siasang.
I'm here.
That completes.
And I'm here. Thank you.
Yeah. That completes the roll call and we have a call on.
Okay, I don't see any members of the public here, but I'll go ahead and read the mission statement. The purpose of the Commission on Police Practices is to provide an independent investigation of officer-involved shootings and custody deaths and unbiased evaluation of all complaints against the San Diego Police Department and its personnel in a process that will be transparent and accountable to the community. The Commission will also evaluate and review SDPD policies, practices, training and protocols, and represent the community in making recommendations for changes. The mission of the Commission is to hold law enforcement accountable to the community and to increase community trust in law enforcement resulting in increased safety for both the community and law enforcement. And okay.
We also have a former Commissioner as well.
Okay, okay. And some. Okay, so the first of our agenda items is a resolution that is required to conduct our meeting virtually. And we have to adopt this resolution every 30 days. And so I'll read the resolution, then we'll ask somebody to to actually make the motion. The Commission on Police Practices will adopt this resolution, authorizing and ratifying the use of teleconferencing for all meetings, including meetings of ad hoc or standing committees in accordance with Government Code Sections 54953E and all other applicable provisions of the Brown Act for a period of 30 days from the adoption of this resolution. Or such time as the Commission adopts a subsequent resolution in accordance with Government Code Section 54953E. The interim executive director is directed to return no later than 30 days after the adoption of this resolution with an item for this legislative body's reconsideration of these findings. And so do I hear a motion to adopt the resolution?
So move.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any public comment? Is there any comment by Commissioners? Seeing then we can proceed with the with the vote, Charmaine.
Acting Chaircase.
Yes.
Permission of Von.
Yes.
Permission of Dent.
Yes.
Permission of Spruce. Oh, she's excuse. Commissioner, well, Second Vice Chair Harrington.
Yes.
Commissioner Dabo Griffin.
Yes.
Permission of Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
And Chair Hope is excused as well as Commissioner Milk. Motion passes. The vote is seven zero zero.
Okay, the next two items are items that were on our open agenda meeting of October. But they I put them on the agenda for two reasons. Number one is that we discovered after their adoption that one of them was inconsistent with the implementation ordinance. And so we had to make a revision to it. And then in preparing the minutes, Charmaine discovered that there was never actually a motion. We actually voted on both of procedures. So we probably are okay, but since we're having to reconsider one, we're going to go ahead and ratify each of them. And the first one is the motion for, well, the first one is the proposed operational procedure for nomination and selection process for Commissioners. And the motion would be approval of the revised proposed operational procedure for the nomination and selection process for CPP Commissioners. So let's get a motion out of the way. Do I hear it's made? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and Charmaine, if you can scroll down on the screen to the resolution.
The procedure.
Get to the procedure itself. Yes, I'm sorry. It's too far, okay? And since we read this and discussed it at the last meeting, unless somebody would like for me to, I won't read the whole thing. But the process is that the Commission would appoint a nominating committee. Let's scroll down and the nominating committee would receive applications. And and the the composition of the nominating committee was specified in the first item there. Just scroll back up seconds. And it would be three current or former Commissioners and six community members chosen by the Commission with the specifications there. One of whom must be in the 18 to 40, 18 to 24 age group, then go ahead and scroll back down. And then applicants would apply through the existing boards and commissions website. We would follow up with the supplemental application. All applicants would go to an orientation session. Then the community, the nominations committee would interview all of the applicants who are eligible and and then they would make recommendations for all 25 of the seats. According to the various categories that are specified in the implementation ordinance. And then scroll on down and what we had initially put, and this was my mistake. The transition committee had initially recommended that the implementation ordinance specify that for the initial 25 appointees that the nominating committee would indicate which they were recommending for a two-year term and which were for a one-year term because they would all all 25 would be appointed together, but half of them would serve a one-year term and the other would others would serve a two-year terms. There would be staggered terms. If you can just scroll on down to what the change that was made. And the process that was well, the change that was made anyway, so so as you can see, we're striking out that the nominations committee would do that. We would the nominations committee would prepare a statement of qualifications for each candidate. And then scroll on down further and then would send their recommendations to the city council. And then the city council would have the sole discretion to accept the recommendations of the nominating committee. And then that number 10 there, which comes directly from the ordinance itself, and this was pointed out to us by a council member Whitburn staff, and we met with him. And the ordinance says that following the first council appointments to the Commission, the city clerk will administer a random drawing to determine which of the 25 members will initially serve a one-year term. And so that's the process that the ordinance requires. And so we changed it to to do that. And then the final step of the process is the background checks will be conducted by the city's personnel department prior to appointment. And so are there any questions in Commissioners? Okay, is there any public comment? Okay, any comment from Commissioners? Then we can proceed with the vote.
Acting Chaircase.
Yes.
Permission of Von.
Yes.
Permission of Dent.
Yes.
Permission of Spruce is abs is excuse. Second Vice Chair Harrington.
Yes.
Permission of Shay is also excused. Commissioned Dabo Griffin.
Yes.
Mission or Smith?
Yes.
Mission of Clark.
Yes.
Chair Hope is is excused as well as Commission of Pain. Motion passes seven zero zero.
Okay, we can continue on to the other resolution. If you want to scroll down to it. This is the resolution for the selection process for the permanent executive director. And there's no changes being recommended there. We're just essentially ratifying it since there wasn't an official motion last time. And so before we get started, can somebody make that motion to accept this operating procedure for the selection process of the executive?
I will so move, Doug.
And second by somebody second it.
I am a debt.
Okay. Okay, and so I'll go through this briefly since we discussed it at the last meeting. We would utilize an executive search firm. The executive search firm would solicit applications and would do an initial valuation and select 10 to 15. Then there'd be a selection committee consisting of the commission officers that are designated and a community representative chosen by the commission to determine semifinalist. And then there would be two panels, one to be a community panel, similar to the community panel that we are utilizing or did utilize for the community engagement coordinator made up of seven to 10 community organization representatives and seven to 10 community organizations who would rate each of the each of the semifinalists. And then the semifinalists would also do a presentation before the entire commission. This would be the new commission of 25 members. And each of Commissioners would also submit a rating sheet. And in both cases, they would have the opportunity of asking questions and scroll down further and then they would, selection committee would select the top three. Actually, we'd select at least three to interview and and then they would interview those candidates and fill out rating sheets and then pass those on along to the city council. They would not be rank order, but they would give a summary of the strengths and weaknesses of each candidate. And then the city council would conduct their own interviews of the three finalists and make the final appointment. Okay. And so that is the process. Are there any questions? Any public comment? Any comment from Commissioners? Seeing then we can proceed with the vote.
I have a question.
Okay.
For number six. The election committee is going to select at least three candidates to interview. And then they'll forward those three candidates to the city council regardless of the interview. It was also the interview.
Yeah, they they will review the candidates. They will select the three to interview. They will interview those three. And then based on those interviews, they would are you suggesting that's not clear that the selection committee would interview them?
Yes, I think, I don't know if the number. So what I guess my question is unclear as to if going to interview the three candidates, right? Are those three candidates regardless of how the interview process went will be forwarded over to?
That's correct. Right, so that they would select three and then all three of them would be interviewed and then the recommendation to be sent to the city council who would also then review, interview those final three.
What if the selection committee has concerns about maybe one of the candidates?
Then they would include that in their in their evaluation, they submit to the so that they would identify the strengths and weaknesses of each of the candidates.
Okay.
But they, Doug, they could interview more than three. It says at least three, but
at least three, but it says yeah, you're correct. So that they could interview, yeah, the selection committee. Thank you, Nancy. The selection committee could interview more than three. But they're only going to send three to the city council.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Okay.
So this is, I'm just reading through this this section here on the screen. If I'm understanding this correctly, is it only this community panel and the selection committee that's going to choose the executive director?
I'm not sure I understand the question. I mean, we would utilize an executive search firm.
Right.
And then they would determine this, then the selection committee would determine the semifinalist. The semifinalist would go through two interviewing panels, if you will, one of community representatives and one of the commission itself. And then based upon that feedback, the selection committee will select at least three of the interview. And then they will give three candidates to the city council to make the final determination.
That makes sense. Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Is there any public comment? Any Commissioner comment? Okay. And so we can go ahead and proceed with the vote.
Acting Chaircase.
Yes.
Permission of Von.
Yes.
Permission of Dent.
Yes.
Second Vice Chair Harrington.
Yes.
Permission of Dabo Griffin.
Yes.
Commissioner Shay and Commissioner Spruce are excused. Permission of Smith.
Yes.
Permission of Clark.
Yes.
Chair Hope and Commission of Pink, they are also excused. The motion passes seven zero zero.
Okay, and then the next one is a new item which was not already discussed by the Commission. And if I want to go ahead and scroll down, Charmaine. Actually, what, I want you to do me a favor and scroll up to the very, to the agenda and we'll get the motion on the floor. And then we'll, then I'll proceed to explain it. The motion is to approve the addition of the admonition statement required by Penal Code Section 148.682 to the Commission's complaint form. And so if somebody can make that motion, have it seconded, then I will explain it briefly and then I'll call on our legal counsel to explain it in more detail, answer any questions, and then we can proceed.
I will make that motion, Doug.
Okay.
I second.
Okay. And so now we'll scroll down and to that, if you can scroll down to it. This stems from a recent California Supreme Court case. And the, I want you to stop there with all the capitalizing, scroll down Charmaine to the, to the statement, which is all in caps. Okay. The penal code section, which has been in effect for many years, requires that this statement that you see on the screen in capitals be included on all complaint forms. Several police departments, including Los Angeles and San Diego, did not include that because they felt that it had a chilling effect. But the California Supreme Court disagreed. And as a result of that ruling, this has to be included. And the department has already made the change to theirs. And let me see if I can I'll just read what it says. It says you have the right to make a complaint against police officer, a police officer for any improper conduct. The California law requires this agency to have a procedure to investigate civilians' complaints. You have a right to a written description of this procedure. This agency may find after investigating that there is not enough evidence to warrant an action of your complaint. Even if that is the case, you have the right to make the complaint and to have it investigated if you believe an officer behaved improperly. Civilian complaints and any reports or findings related to the complaints must be retained by this agency for at least five years. It is against the law to make a complaint that you know to be false. If you make a complaint against an officer knowing that it is false, you may be prosecuted on a misdemeanor charge. And I'm not sure whether the first paragraph is, was already included in the complaint form, but it is the the second paragraph there that has been the a topic of legal contention, but the courts have ruled and were required to add it to our complaint form. Our complaint form, as I understand it, was initially adopted by a motion of this body. And so we need to have a motion which was just made to to modify it. And I think I'll, I'll stop there. Then I will let our legal counsel, Dwayne Bennett, tell me whether I did a good enough job of explaining it to maybe elaborate it further.
Okay, thank you, acting chair. Yes, members of the Commission, this language that is reflected in the penal code has been law for a long time. And many departments, including those that I served as police legal advisor for, including Oceanside, San Diego Harbor Police. We always had this language in our complaint form, citizen complaint forms. The language became controversial because although the Supreme Court affirmed the language back in 2000, a federal court believed that it had a chilling effect on citizens or on the public making complaints because it seemed to imply that you could be prosecuted if you file a complaint. It is false. Well, in the city of Los Angeles, LA Police protectively, after the Rodney King beating, noted that there were a lot and the courts noted that there were a lot of complaints that started coming into the police department that people believe were false. They were not appropriate. City of Los Angeles had backed away from the language based upon the federal language in the federal court opinion. But in May of this year, the Court of Appeal again reaffirmed the inclusion or the necessity to include this language in complaint forms. The controversy is over the last language or the bottom paragraph, which is a perjury, penalty of perjury paragraph. Where people believe, some people believe it chills or it prevents people from making complaints. And the language does not do that. It has never done that. The language simply states that if you knowingly file a false complaint, you could be subject to misdemeanor prosecution. And in many respects, this is actually good language. Neither the police department or any police department nor a citizens' review board such as yourselves should be forced or should use resources to file or to investigate knowingly false complaints. The other thing I would say to people who are concerned about this language is this language is basically the same language that we use when we file tax returns or when you apply for a driver's license, you sign a penalty of perjury statement that what you're saying is true on that application. So this form in this admonition is not dissimilar to many admonitions throughout government. And for purposes of getting government services, we sign forms like this all the time. So you know, the, if a person makes a complaint against a department and it turns out to be not sustained, exonerated, unfounded, that doesn't mean it was filed as a knowingly false complaint. It just means that the evidence wasn't there or there was a justification for why the complaint wasn't sustained. That's not the type of complaint that's going to subject somebody to prosecution. And so this language is, is, is clear. Again, it's been on the books for years and it's, it's not new. It's just that some departments got away from it. What my recommendation to you was that you get to it, make sure the language is included in the citizen complaint form to preserve the integrity of your mission and, and what you're supposed to be doing as a commission.
Okay, and I see Nancy has her end up. I assume that's a question.
As usual. Dwayne, I have, we had this statement when I first got on CRB, if I remember correctly. It was about that time that police department and CRB decided to take it off because we did have proof that people who had complaints refused to file them because of this, what they considered to be a threat. I understand we signed something similar for IRS, but the chances of IRS coming after us are pretty slim compared to local police department. And so people who are in a position of being uneasy dealing with the police to begin with will, will not file when they read this. And we saw that happening and that's why it was taken off of the books as far as we were concerned. I'm sorry to see it coming back in a sense, or I wish there was a better way of more explanation that goes with it on the form or something that would ease people's minds. Because I felt like, and I've seen it here in, in my community here in Ocean Beach, people who would like to file and they're reluctant to. And so already reluctant to. So this will only make it worse, I'm afraid. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Any other any other questions? Any? You got a question?
Yes, I have a question. We see a lot of the complaints and process a lot of complaints in our office as well. So we encourage people to file complaints. They file it like via the phone. They also file it through the email system and electronically. I'm just trying to understand, maybe this is a question for internal affairs. How are people directed now to file their complaints? Because I remember like anybody can file the complaint by calling the chief. They can file the complaint via email as well as calling it in. How is that handled?
I think it was a question for the department. So Chris, do you want to respond?
Nancy, you want, you want to give the update on that?
Yeah, we're basically still taking complaints as we worried previously. We really hadn't changed with what's accepting our complaints. But they have to keep in mind that say if there was an anonymous complaint, if we don't have the appropriate information to investigate it, we won't move forward with the investigation.
And can I add something? What, what we used to do, and again, San Diego PD, you do, do it however you are. What departments I worked in in the past used to do is when a complaint came in, if it was a verbal complaint, the department would take it, but then they would get the complainant to sign the form. You know, and it could be ex post facto. So you take the complaint, you take the complaint on the form. You say, okay, thank you very much. We're going to send you the citizen complaint form. You must sign the the form and we'll proceed. I, and I understand, Nancy, I totally get what you're saying because you're vocalizing what the federal court was saying and what the opposition to this language was saying. All I can tell you all, you know, as you're, as you're, you know, outside counsel, all I can do is give you the best legal advice I can. And the Supreme Court, California Supreme Court have validated this language. And just like I say, people have to read it carefully because you know, if, if, if a person doesn't want, if they believe they have a valid complaint, then there's no issue. I mean, it, the, 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 the language is if you knowingly, and that requires specific intent. Knowingly, if you, if you intentionally file what you know to be a false complaint, that's problematic. And you know, that's what the, you know, what the language is. If, if citizens, you know, are concerned about it and and need that explanation, I mean, you know, if there's a two, you know, you have to err in two respects to run a file. There's number one, you have to knowingly, intentionally, purposely, willfully decide that you're going to file a false complaint before this language becomes actionable. And so the legislature has deemed it fit for it to be there. You know, the courts and just like I said, in May of this year, the Court of Appeal said, nope, the language is valid and it's there for a reason. And just like I said, the, 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 the corollary, that the opposite of what people are concerned about being dissuaded from filing complaints was happening to a lot of police departments where people were just filing complaint one after another, one after another, false intensely, you know, intensely false complaints. And that became a problem for the department and for the city. So.
So I have a question. I assume that the So, so I have a question. I, I assume that the, uh. The signature, uh, can be a, uh, electronic signature. Is that correct? So we can put it on our, um. On our like, on our online complaint form.
That should be fine.
Okay. And, uh. And so maybe we could even, you know, procedure wise, uh, you know, take the complaint, uh, over the phone or via email, but instruct them to a. To fill out the form for. To make an official complaint.
Yeah, that's what, that's what many departments and the departments I work, uh, in, that's, that's the way we handle it.
We'll take, we'll take the, the complaint over the phone. Or we should direct them directly to the electronic complaint form.
Right. Or, or send them the form. And in the, on the old fashioned days, we would take, they would take the complaint and then mail first in a complaint form. That's old, old, old fashioned.
Charmaine, if I can try to.
Go ahead.
Just for, for our, our forum online, we have a box that they check. Uh, admonishing, I'm not admonishing, acknowledging that they understand that statement before they can move forward.
And let me also add that we already made the changes on our complaint form electronically. So it's already there. And they, I think we do have the, um, checkbox as well. Um. And then I have a follow-up question.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead and ask your follow-up question?
If the complainant does not want to sign the form, that means we turn away their complaint, right?
Not necessarily. Dwayne, why don't you answer that question?
Well, it, look, if, you know, the law is a law, right? And so, you know, I, I don't know what the, the PD does and what their practice is. If it's me advising you and you say that somebody, you know, filed a, or, or called in a complaint and they don't want to sign the complaint, the, the, the form. I'm going to tell you under your new authority, you don't have to investigate this complaint. I mean, that, you know, I, I, I don't know what else to tell. I understand.
Why? I, I, I think the, the, the question is reverse of that i- is, can we investigate the complaint? And so.
It's, it, you, you know, okay, here, here's the other thing. If you investigate, I, I can't speak for the police officer association or any police officer that will be impacted by this. But if you were to investigate, uh, investigate a complaint where the requirement and the specification of the statute was not met, you do it at your own peril. I mean, I, I don't know what else to say. I mean, the, the, the law says that if you file this complaint, you must sign this form. And so, I, you know, I, I don't know what else to say. I mean, if you have, now, now perhaps you come up with some other investigative lead. Besides what, uh, this person is saying, perhaps you see the, the, the conduct yourself. And so there, there could be some circumstances, but I just don't think that, uh, any, that you as an agency or you as an entity, uh. The investigator, if people refuse to sign the form, uh, you don't, you could arguably, you don't have a complaint. You don't have a valid complaint.
Okay. Then what about anonymous complaints?
I don't know, you know, I, I don't know how, I, I don't know how the department had ever handled anonymous complaints. I don't know how you, first of all, I don't know how you even investigate anonymous complaint. If you don't, if, if you don't come up with an independent lead. So for example, if somebody anonymously complains about, uh, a police officer and there's no way to verify or independently affirm or to corroborate. Uh, uh, what the anonymous complaint, uh, is predicated on. I don't know how you investigate that anyway. I mean, at some point in time and, and I can weigh in on this or Chief McGrath, but at some point in time, you have to have somebody. Or some evidence that there's, uh, you know, a, a, a valid, a valid complaint. But if everybody is not, if people are just phoning in information and then having you chase down and investigate leads and investigative police officer. I don't know how you do that and I don't know how that investigation has any integrity to it. I mean, I, you, if, if somebody calls in an anonymous complaint and you independently come up with a valid source. To justify that complaint, that's one thing, but in even under, under the guise of Pobart. I mean, or the, you know, a police officer has the right to know who this complainant is. You know, who's complaining about me? We don't know. It's anonymous. Well, what are you investigating? I mean, so I, I know there are all kinds of circumstances and there are situations that could arise. Uh, and, and there's no one shoe fits all, but I, I have never understood the concept of anonymous complaints. If there is not an independent lead that the department or that I can go to, 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 to verify that there is a valid complaint because. People can't just phone in complaints and, and hide behind, you know, hide behind a phone and have you chasing down, uh. Uh, alleged misconduct. You know, you don't have anybody even to interview if they're, uh, anonymous.
Okay. I see Ernestine, then Kevin. Ernestine, you're muted.
Yeah, I just want to say I've never felt comfortable with any, um, complaints that slipped through that were anonymous. But I, this admonition really just says that we have to be as fair to the. Officer as we are to the complainant. So that's why we could leave that in there, but also maybe add a sentence that if you wish to talk to someone about it, then give them. A resource for that. But that's my big point though, is that it's only being as fair to the officer as it is to the complainant.
Okay. And Kevin, did you have a question? Then I see Nancy's hand up.
Um, I guess it just needs more, for me, it needs more clarification. Uh, I just wanted, uh, you know. A simple, clear, unequivocal answer, which is. If a complaint comes in, it's not signed, they refuse to sign, then we just inform them that we can't investigate their complaint. And also that we do not accept, uh, complaints that are anonymous or we. Or, or, or we may or may not accept it. That might be a thing because there's certain things that if you said. To a police department honestly on the phone, they're going to look into it, right? Depending on certain, certain things. So. Obviously, if it's very egregious and it's something they can check in the system or on a video or somehow they're getting, and it's, you know, risks to them, they're going to want to know. And they're going to look anyway. So I guess I just want more clarification on that, uh, and kind of have that narrowed down a little bit, or at least for now, we just say. It may or may not be, and then leave it there because that's probably what will happen anyway. Cause like I said, it depends on what's said in the complaint anonymously.
Yeah, a couple of things. Well, I mean, the motion is simply to put the language that is required by law onto the form, which actually we've already done, but we're. Yeah. Having the, uh.
Okay.
The com- the commission ratify that, um, you know, the issue of how to deal with anonymous complaints, uh. May require more research. I know other. Other departments and other jurisdictions have had a similar issue. There was a discussion at NACOL this year. I think it was Texas has a very similar law. I think their law is new. Um, and they, uh, and some departments are accepting anonymous complaints, others are not. And there was a discussion of. You know, the appropriate, when it was appropriate to do that, under what circumstances, et cetera. Um, and I think we can go ahead and pass this motion tonight, which simply. Says we're going to comply with. Having the proper complaint form and then we can investigate, uh, study those issues later. Uh, but Nancy, you have a question?
Yes, um, does this apply to any kind of a complaint? In other words. We have people who complain and it's a formal process complaint. We have people who complain and it's an informal. Process complaint and we're looking forward to setting up mediation, which is another form of handling somebody's. Um, I guess you'd call it a complaint, but they're displeasure, whatever. Um, is there some place where this? Would not, would not be necessary? In that process?
Can, can I answer that chair? I, I.
Sure. Go ahead.
Yeah, if it's against a police officer, this is the process. And so even if, if you, you know, the, the mediation process that is contemplated under the ordinance. Uh, doesn't, doesn't affect this at all. A person can make a complaint against a, a police officer and. Maybe the, the, you know, mediation may be the way to resolve it, but again, this language would apply to any complaints against police officers.
Okay. Well, I don't want to see false complaints coming through. None of us really want to waste our time on. Knowingly false complaints, but I haven't seen very many in thirteen years. And so. I just, I just think it will put off people. That's all. Thank you.
And, and I think if I could just add one thing, you know, maybe one thing you want to do, the commission might want to consider just doing, uh, frequently asked questions. Uh, addendum to this, I mean, to the complaint form that, that, you know, that tries to explain to people. That, you know, look, you, 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 if you knowingly, knowingly file a false complaint, that's the problem. This language is there to just prevent that.
And any other, um. Were kind of in questions, but, um. Just moved to public comment. Was there any members of the public who wanted to comment on this? Okay. And then it, oh, I guess I'll comment briefly. No, you know, this was a discussion at, uh, NACOL and the general consensus was that, uh. Having, uh, this type of language can have a chilling effect and. The general consensus of, you know, the presenters was that, uh, it should be avoided unless it's required by law. You know, but in California, Texas, and I'm sure some other states, uh. It is required by law and so. Uh, we don't really have much of a choice in my opinion, but. Any other commissioners want to comment? Okay. Seeing none, then we will, uh, proceed with the vote.
So we had a motion.
Yes, yes, we did get a motion. I made sure of that.
And it was seconded by, um, Commissioner David Griffin.
That's correct.
Let me proceed. Acton Chaircase.
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Yes.
Commissioner Dent.
Yes.
Commissioner Spusa's excuse, second vice chair Harrington.
Yes.
Commissioner Shane.
Yes.
Commissioner David Griffin.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
And Chair Hilbert and Commissioner Pink is also excused. That come. Motion passes, the vote is. Eight zero zero.
Okay. Our, our previous motions were seven zero zero. Did we have somebody, uh, joined after?
Yes, um, Commissioner Shay joined at, um, six twenty-two PM.
Okay. And that concludes our business for this evening. And, uh, so, uh, at this point, uh, we will adjourn and I can make it to the Aztecs basketball game.
Oh, how nice. I love that.